Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. The first item on the agenda is the master plan update discussion, but we're not going to do that one at first, we're going to do that one second. And the last item on the agenda is a discussion item, 12 Thayer Lane, Heritage Crossing, Lot Number One, lot release. I'll ask the town planner to give us the background on this one.
On February 12th, I got a call from the current homeowner on 12 Thayer Lane, which is in Heritage Crossing subdivision, Inho Lee. And I believe Mrs. Lee is here this evening. And they are in the process of selling their property. And when they did, when the attorneys did the search on the property, they found, they didn't find a release of the lot, which is typical for subdivision lots. So we did research here, we found the original covenant back from April 22nd of 2013. We also found release of lots two through six. But Lot Number One, which was the original house, had also been defined as a smaller lot at that point, was also on the definitive subdivision plan. So therefore, the easiest way to mitigate this is, we did check with the town clerks, we checked with the building department. Sarah did a lot of due diligence to see if we could find the release anywhere, and it wasn't around. So typically, the planning board will do just a brand-new release. So that's where we are today.
Mrs. Lee, did you have anything to say?
Uh, no.
The answer is no. So therefore, you don't need a microphone. So we'll open it up to the board and see if there's any questions or comments. Mrs. Houlihan.
No questions, no comments.
Mrs. Latrell.
All set.
Mr. Stein.
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Mills. We need a motion to endorse the release of lot from the covenant, Heritage Crossing subdivision.
Lot One.
Lot One. Mr. Stein.
I'm issuing a motion that the planning board release the lot from covenant, Heritage Crossing subdivision, Lot One, at 12 Thayer Lane.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five to zero. We'll sign that right now because we have the notary here. There's also the town clerk.
So we have to do this too, right?
Twenty-fourth day? Is today the 24th? Yep. Twenty-fourth day of February 2020. Ready, Jim?
Would you like me to have to, and give them a true test copy of this, so we can retain the original file files?
Sure. Yeah. Dan, are you just here for Ston Brook? Which is the second to the last item?
Yep.
So we'll do you, we'll do yours now too, I guess.
Just want to get a copy of this and then bring it to you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll move the Ston Brook Village subdivision bond reduction discussion forward now, and ask the town planner to give us the background.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this. I'm going to butter.
Thank you.
Earlier, actually, I believe it was January timeframe, I got a request from Dan Ruiz, who represents Capital Group Properties for Ston Brook Village, the 55-plus site on Ston Brook Court, and for a bond reduction. If you recall, I believe last fall, there was a bond put in place to complete the construction work of the subdivision. I believe it was $168,000 at the time. So we engaged Fussin O'Neil to do a site visit and inspect to see what was still remaining, which they did do on January 10th. We provided that bond reduction letter and estimate, which is now reduced, the estimate is reduced to $38,000, according to Fussin O'Neil, who provided us a bond reduction estimate on February 4th, 2020. They performed an inspection on January 10th. It was provided to Capital Group Properties for review, and you found it acceptable.
Yep.
Are you missing a page?
One.
Got it? So in your packet, you'll have the letter from Fussin O'Neil that talks about what's been completed since the last inspection for the bond, what still remains to be done. And then you'll see, the third page is a short estimate down to 38,000. You can see there's some guard rail, some split-rail fence, some signage, some steel pins, plastic caps for, I believe, wetland boundaries, concrete bounds for road monumentation as built, some sparkleberry bushes, eight to 10 evergreen trees at 7 Oregon Road, and a couple of manhole covers that needed to be replaced. It's my understanding that you've been trying to contact the 7 Oregon Road residents to resolve the trees, but you haven't gotten a response in that you were going to continue to work on that when you come back for the final bond?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in your packet, you'll have a summary of the inspection that they did that backs up their letter, Fussin O'Neil's letter.
Very good. Dan, did you want to add anything to that?
No. I guess the only thing which she spoke about, which was the Condition 71, contacting the owners of 7 Oregon Road. I'll continue trying until we get to the final bond release, but I have tried, you know, sent certified letters to them about the condition and meeting with them on site and, you know, installing these trees, but we haven't, I haven't received anything back from them. But they have, but they have received it. Yeah. I, I, yeah, I brought the certified mailing that I received back from them.
Any que, y'all set in?
Yeah.
Any questions on the board? Mr. Stein.
What is the amount that the town is holding currently?
168.
We're holding a shorty bond. Oh, I'm sorry. We're holding a bond for, one second.
I think it was 168.
168. Let me just, I have, yeah, 100. So we have an original bond, this is a copy, that was executed May 13th, 2019, so I guess it was more summer, $168,000.
What's the proponent seeking for a reduction?
They proposed it down to 38,000.
So a reduction of 130,000.
So you agree with that? Yeah. Yeah. We're in agreement with it.
Jesse? Anyone else? Questions, comments? Mr. Mills?
Just wondering, when do you think the whole thing will be done?
So I actually met with our, there's a couple of small things. We're waiting for the surveyors to do the pins, the bounds. They said they're a few weeks out on that, and we are working on the split-rail fence, the, should be done within the next couple of weeks. The signage, which is the no disturb for the, that'll go on the rails, have already been ordered. And then the sparkleberry bush, that one's going to probably be not till spring. We're going to have to meet with the open space committee and see exactly where they want them in the wetlands area and in the open space.
Is that the last bullet where there appears to be landscaping located within the maintenance access for the stormwater basin? Is that the sparkleberry bush, or is that something else?
No. Where did you see that?
The last bullet that Fussin O'Neil put? I think it's on the second.
Dan, in the inspection report?
Yeah.
From Fussin O'Neil, remember Conservation had concerns with the landscaping that's in the access to the, maintaining the detention basin?
Yeah.
So that was a concern that they, that, you know, access is maintained so you can maintain, get around the detention.
Get around down there.
To clean it and mow it, or whatever you're supposed to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, we don't see that there's going to be too much of an issue to get down there. The only maintenance we're really going to have to do is to mow down there. We wouldn't really have to get anything big in that area.
To reiterate, though, that Conservation was concerned if you did have to remove any silting or anything, because it was used during construction.
Correct. It was. And we did get a letter from Vito saying that it was still acting as it was supposed to and that it was clean. And if we did have to, if later on we did have to go and clean it, it would be done by hand, you know, buckets.
And you, you did let Conservation know that, right?
Yeah. Melissa knows that.
Okay.
I've had to get her a letter several times, just to make sure it was still being kept.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Questions, comments?
Anyone from the public? Questions, comments? Mrs. Latrell.
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon, speaking as a private citizen. Does Fussin O'Neil verify that the landscaping's been put in as per the plans?
Yes, they have been.
Because I don't think it has been.
They've been, this, this was a concern when the initial bond was set, that particular landscape was included and certain landscape was not included. So it is my understanding that they did review that and they were aware that, remember, well, I don't know, you were recused, but at the initial bond meetings that we had here, it was very clear that, we first came in with like a $400,000 bond, and it was because it was including every single piece of landscaping beyond what was on the plan. And then we talked to Fussin O'Neil to draw that back to the reality of the site plan of what was approved. So it's my understanding that they did review that because they were told we were concerned with it the first time. If there's particular areas that you have a question on, I could follow up with them specifically on those.
Well, just, just by me, I know there was supposed to be 40 arborvitae's that aren't, weren't.
Was that a condition?
There's some white pines were put in, it's on the landscape plan.
It is on the landscape plan. All right. Well, I'll have to revisit that. I'll have to check. So it's, how many was it?
Forty.
Forty arborvitae?
Yeah.
Was that a condition, or are you just saying it was on the landscape?
It was on the landscape plan.
On the final approved, I'll have to check the final approved set?
Yeah.
And, okay. And these are what, along your abutting property line?
Some are abutting, but they're along that, the second house there, the, between the second house and the over 55. They're supposed to go up there and then, and come around the corner, which is abutting my property.
So lot, so where the old daycare was, there's a new house behind that?
Right. That one.
From that, behind that house and around the corner?
Yeah. To abutting, to abutting my backyard. So there are white pines that were substituted, and there are not 40 of them.
Do you know anything about that?
No. That's why I'm taking note on this.
Second house.
This is the first time I'm actually hearing of this.
Around corner. Just want to see if I have the decision here.
I have the decision, if you need it.
Yeah.
I.
You might want to quickly scan it to see if there was a condition on that.
Oh.
I'm, I'm just going to go grab my construction book with the plan in it, and then we'll know precisely where it is so I can, we can follow up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan, while, while Karina's doing that.
Yeah.
You, you've been around enough, and others have seen the long history of the planning board with these bond releases.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we have these individual numbers against these items. When we get down to this point, you know, the, the final releasing of the funds isn't necessarily tied to the specific number here. The board has the authority to say that if you have, for example, if you don't, if you have everything done and we don't have the as-built, the board may say, well, we're not releasing the 38,000.
Okay.
Until you give us the as-built.
Mm-hmm.
Or until you put up the split-rail fence.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it might be, the 38,000 might be 10 times the value of that item. It's the incentive to get it done.
Yep.
And have the, it released.
Yeah.
So.
And that's why, I mean, we, we did the first initial bond reduction, we're trying to do that. Now we're trying to just make sure we get everything cleaned up and finalized.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. I remember back in May, when Karina was doing this, there was quite a bit of, I don't know if it was pushback, but there was quite a bit of discussion about that amount.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we came together on, on it, which is good.
Mm-hmm.
But when we get toward, to, right to the end, we don't necessarily have to come together.
Yeah. No. I totally understand.
The board holds the money to protect the town.
Yeah. I totally understand.
And the neighbors. Mr. Stein.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, but we could reduce the bond down to a higher number than 38,000 at this meeting.
Mm-hmm. Even if Fussin O'Neil says that that's the amount?
We could also do zero, and leave it the way it is.
Right. Or we could release everything and trust you.
That's not happening.
Yeah. I'd like to actually see.
So that's, if you actually look up there, there's, I know there's, there's trees that I saw over there, but.
I don't have 40, and they're not arborvitae's, they're white pines.
Let me see if we can put it on the screen, so that it's clear.
Because the reduction in landscaping's supposed to come back before the planning board.
Yeah. I'd have to go out there and look at exactly what's there. I know there's trees there, I just don't know how many. I couldn't really tell you.
I'll tell you there's not 40.
Okay.
There might be 12.
Okay.
Okay. So let me ask Mrs. Latrell, if you feel comfortable with the board releasing the, the money down to 38,000, or because of what you're seeing here, you feel that that number's too low? This is your opportunity to, to, I guess, petition the board to, or give us a comfort level that it's okay to release.
I would say this board places a lot of importance in landscaping, and after spending so much time going over it, I would hope that what's on the ground agrees with the plan. And from what I can see, just, it's a private road, so I haven't gone down there, but from what I can see from my abutting property, it hasn't been.
So down to the, the board's going to take a vote to release money and only hold, and hold only 38,000, based on our consultant's estimate? I'm not sure if that, if that vote will prevail, but that's, that, it's either going to be the, that motion or a different dollar amount.
So my question would be, if the, if the landscaping hasn't been installed per the plans, and it's my understanding if there's any reduction in landscaping, it's supposed to come back before the planning board for approval, I would think you would want enough in, in the leftover bond to cover landscaping.
So if we bump the number to 50,000, would that work for tonight?
I would think so.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We reduce the bond for Stony Brook Village subdivision to $50,000, per discussion by the board and per the recommendation of Fussin O'Neil.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, to zero. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Dan, are you going to get back to me on that?
Yeah. I'll go down there and look at it.
Okay.
I don't really know anything about that, so.
Okay.
I don't want to speak on it.
All right. You just might want to check the approved plan sets you have. Okay?
Will do.
So next item on the agenda is the master plan update. We'll ask Mrs. Latrell to provide that.
The master plan committee last met on February 12th, in which we discussed different methods to receive more input into what the townspeople and town entities would like to see in the town in the next 10 to 20 years. We took our show on the road. There are posters from our public forum at the, the South Row Public Library in the Eaton Room. There are sticky notes there to add your ideas. Mr. Mills and I re-edited the survey, and that hopefully will be finalized at our next meeting and will be sent out. We will be updating town meeting on our progress. Our next meeting is March 11th at the Senior Center. All our meetings for 2020 are listed on our website as our, all the documents that we use at our meetings. All our meetings for two thousand and twenty are listed on our website as our, all the documents that we use at our meetings. Anything else, Andrew?
No. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, anybody? Not, we'll move on to the next item, which is a continued public hearing for the annual town meeting warrant article to amend section one seventy-four dash ten site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from January twenty-seventh and February tenth. We'll ask the town planner to get us started.
After the last planning board public hearing on February tenth, we made some minor edits based on the discussion that the planning board had that evening regarding constructive approval language and such. And that was submitted to the town administrator's office for final review for warrant printing, approval and printing, or for them to be aware of it and then go to the printers. So that was sent on February twelfth to the town administrator board of selectmen's office. There have been no further changes on that. We do know there's a board of selectmen's meeting tomorrow evening, where the person presenting at town meeting hopefully could attend, and I'm not sure if that was Jessie or Mimi. So, if, if you're available, if one of you could attend that one.
I will.
That would be very helpful.
How'd you do that, Jessie? Um, actually, they both could attend, right?
Yes, you both could attend. And if anyone else wanted, like, we could post an agenda. Oh, no, it's too late for that. Only two of you can go, if you wanna discuss it.
Well, Mrs. Houlihan, you're gonna be there for-
Lighting.
The lighting. But you could be out of the room at the time that, if we have two for the site plan.
You're talking next?
No, tomorrow, so, February twenty-
I have to be there for CPC.
Yeah.
Everyone's volunteering. This is good.
So if you look at the board of selectmen's agenda for tomorrow, they have town meeting warrant article presentations. Article twenty-eight for the zoning bylaw special permit alterations that the zoning board of appeals is working on with Kate Barry will be article twenty-eight, that's about halfway down the list, followed by article twenty-nine, the zoning bylaw change for outdoor illumination, then followed by article thirty, zoning bylaw change for the site plan review. So that meeting starts at seven. And they just wanna brief information on it, and they may have a couple of questions. You know, we've been talking to various people about these, so it's, it's not like a cold call.
So, um-
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
Also, if you look at the board of selectmen's packet for tomorrow, the most current version of the warrant is there. And you'll see that our final drafts are in there, and then, you know, Sarah, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Um, no, I, the town administrator's office requested that we change the format a little bit in terms of highlighting the differences between the two, you know, the amended, proposed. And so we bolded everything that's new, and then we put a strike through, through everything that would be omitted. So that was pretty much the biggest change, but all the content is the same.
So is that what is, could, what you just said, would that appear tonight?
Yes, yep.
So let's, let's go over that if we can.
Sure.
You know, it, it, the public, it's the public hearing, so-
Sure.
Anyone who hadn't been here or watched it on the previous two nights, we'll go over it again.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Alrighty. So, yep, so this is the final version. Again, as indicated up here, the bold text are the insertions, and then the strike-through text are deletions. So we see the first kinda set of revisions under section B. So, again, replacing site plan review committee with planning board. The next line, you know, talks about who's on the site plan review committee, and since we're replacing that with the planning board, it's not applicable anymore, so that's been stricken. Under A, completed form, filing fee, and multiple copies of all submission documents shall be submitted to the office of the planning board in accordance with instructions on the application form. Again, no different from the versions that we've looked at throughout this public hearing process. Under twelve, adding planning board, taking away planning review committee. B has been stricken in its entirety because it talks about the review process being looked at originally by the site plan review committee and then going to the planning board, but since there will be no site plan review committee, it'll just be straight to the planning board. Adding in that minor site plan is not a public hearing, which is something that we vetted extensively. C, adding planning board, taking out site plan review committee. Lending additional clarity to the filing of the agreement and the applica, and the applica, application when it comes in. And then the actions that those are approved for one-year period with a single one-year extension. And that all that will be in writing and filed with the town clerk. Here in, under major plan review, just making sure that we're, again, clarifying and creating continuity between the minor and the major. So adding in that the plans will be prepared at a scale no greater than one inch equals forty feet on a standard twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheet. All of this is remaining the same. A few additions here. Application and plan shall be assessed for completeness because sometimes the application is complete, but the plan's not complete, so everything has to be complete in order for that to move forward. So making sure that that's all very clear for the applicant. For C, clarifying that it's plans for major or minor site plan approval. Again, giving, you know, that indication that there needs to be multiple copies as per the instructions on the application form. Approval required, we clarified, you know, from our last discussion at the public hearing, that, that it will, site plan will be approved by a majority vote. In E, we added major, just again for that clarity. In F, we added complete and major. And then the required timeline can be extended by written agreement. G, we consulted with, with town council and came to the conclusion that either minor or major site plan approval application may be appealed to the court in compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section seventeen, as amended. Again, town council said that we should replace inspector with commissioner here in H. So twice we did that in H, and the rest is all the same as written in the current bylaw.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? So, I think we would recommend keeping the public hearing open, especially with the selectmen meeting tomorrow night going over it. And we could easily rece, receive input with the hearing open. So if there's no other questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we continue the pu, public hearing for annual town me, meeting warrant article, amend section one seven-four dash ten site plan approval to March ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven oh five P.M.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Public hearing is continued. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the annual town meeting warrant article to amend sections one seventy-nine dash, one seventy-four dash nine, special permit requirements, and one seventy-four dash nineteen, extensions or alterations. This public hearing is continued from January twenty-seventh and February tenth. We'll ask the town planner to give us the update.
I am going to deflect to Sarah. She's been working closely with Katie Berry from the building department.
Okay. Yeah, Katie's done a wonderful job at revising this bylaw. So, again, you know, as we discussed in the other public hearings, this is, you know, a initiative to clarify, you know, what can be reconstructed by right and what needs a special permit. So, under one seventy-four dash nine, special permit requirements, special permit may be issued for the extension alteration. We're adding in reconstruction or structural change. And then onward as it reads, same thing, finds that such extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change shall be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's a replacement that exists four times within this particular paragraph. Town council did opine that the last sentence, no special permits under this subsection shall be granted for non-conforming signs subject to Chapter ninety-three or ninety-three D of the general laws, was not applicable as the ZBA does not have jurisdiction to implement or make any kind of ruling on those particular mass general laws. So that's been, that's been stricken. One seventy-four dash nineteen, town council had some feedback in terms of the structure of this section, and Katie had taken his feedback and put it into this current version, word for word, as specifically as he outlined it in his correspondence. So again, adding in that reconstructed or structural change is made to that section A. Section B, we're adding, notwithstanding the provisions of section A above, as provided in Mass General Law forty A, Section six. If any proposed extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change to a single or two-family structure complies with one of the conditions set forth in the subsections one through five below, such extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change shall not be considered an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure and shall be promer, permitted as of right. So one through five outline what is permitted as of right, and again, the bold is where the additions are being made. So everything in the plain text is existing in the current bylaw. So four and five are the real additions. So extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change to the rear side or fascia of the structure which encroaches upon a required yard setback area where the alteration will not encroach upon such area to a distance greater than the ex, existing structure. The provision of this subsection shall apply regardless of whether the lot complies with the current area and frontage requirements. So this speci, speaks specifically to the lot itself. Extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change to a non-conforming stru, structure which will not increase the footprint of the existing structure, providing that the existing height restrictions shall not be exceeded. And then town council also added this kind of closure statement. In the event that the building commissioner determines that none of the exemptions set forth in subsections one through five apply, the building commissioner determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change, then the board of appeals may, by special permit, allow such extension, alteration, reconstruction, or structural change where the proposed modification will not be substantially detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So if one through five do not apply, then that person would need to put in an application for a special permit and may still be able to proceed with their project, but they wouldn't be able to do it as of right if it does not fall within the one through five clause lined, outlined here.
And that's a special permit with the zoning board?
With the zoning board, yes.
I also wanna point out that based on the last planning board public hearing for this, we did send a letter from the planning board showing the planning board discussed and supports. Please be advised, during the public hearing on February tenth, the planning board discussed and are in support of the proposed amendments.
That's all I have unless anyone has questions.
Any questions or comments? So, who's gonna do this tomorrow night? Yeah, I'm waiting for somebody from the ZBA to say who is going to do it tomorrow night. For a small fee, we could have Sarah be our consultant. Craig, good evening.
Good evening. Craig Nicholson, Chair of the ZBA. Well, this is the first I heard. There's a board of selectmen meeting discussing it. They did not reach out to me as the chair to request my presence there. So we did not discuss it as to who on the zoning board would be attending, but we will find somebody.
It would seem that if you check out the TV coverage that Sarah just did, maybe you could just pl, play that.
I could if I did that on a regular basis, which I don't, so.
Craig, you might check to make sure they have your proper email address. Cause there's some confusion in that sometimes with boards and committees, depending on what you use. Because they think they, they, they think they sent it to you, but you may not have received it.
Okay.
Okay, so you might wanna just check.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll find somebody.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Cause that's happened to us too. We have to make sure that we had the right emails.
Mr. Mills?
Make a motion, we continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article, amend sections one seventy-four dash nine, special permit requirements, and one seventy-four dash nine, uh, one nine, extensions and alterations.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded.
Oh, for seven, ten P.M. on, uh, March, March ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. So that- So that public hearing is continued. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing continued for the annual town meeting warrant article. Updates, to update section 174-12.1, outdoor illumination. This public hearing is continued from January 27 and February 10. We'll start with the town planner update and, or do you want to just, however you want to do it?
You can go right to the working group.
Mrs. Houlihan?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in.
Mrs. Hecker.
Uh, thank you. So, you know, we've had pretty extensive discussion about the outdoor illumination. It's pretty lengthy, so unless anybody has specific questions, I'm gonna try not to go through the entire thing. Again, it's been, you know, revised to show insertions in bold, and then the strike-throughs are deletions of any, any existing language. We had, the working group has had an opportunity to make up a schedule in terms of getting this bylaw out in front of other boards and committees, as well as public engagement. We have on Wednesday evening, from six to seven, we'll be at the senior center hosting a public engagement session. We also have another one that we're going to do at the library during the day on...
Sarah, do you want to post your flyer? Do you want to present that flyer up there so people and, and the public can see it?
Yes. Continue speaking.
Thank you.
Just to add, the other two dates are Wednesday, March 11. From 10 to 12, we'll be at the library to answer any questions. And the final is Thursday, March 26, at the senior center, six to seven, again, for public engagement. Additionally, Sarah has posted on the town planning board website, all of the content material that the board would like the public to review. It provides in-depth rationale as to why this is being proposed, and some of the references and resources that people can use to evaluate this. The working committee, inclusive of myself, Sarah and Dustin, have created an FAQ and a PowerPoint presentation, so we will be sharing those as well. So hopefully, the frequently asked questions are addressed, and if there are others that the public would like to have addressed, we will certainly include those as they, we assume, just an overwhelming outpouring of people showing up to our public engagements, so we can capture those, those, in those meetings.
Sarah, maybe it's on the, oh, there it is, the flash drive files?
Yes, I got.
There it is.
Okay, done. Yes, we're done.
Forgive us, we're using a new, a Surface Pro we've, we've connected today so that we have more options.
Here's our flyer at the lib.
Sarah, was that on the website?
It is.
And how do you get there?
Um, if you go to the, the planning board page, the, the subpage that Marnie described, it's posted there.
Right there, that top link, the blue one. Right there.
Good times.
Right there. That takes you to the actual.
I love being...
Thanks, Katie.
Greg? So here is the newly updated outdoor illumination page. So it has kind of a summary, you know, about, you know, light pollution in general, kind of talking about, you know, why, why we've kind of taken on this initiative. And then down at the bottom, you can see dates and times and locations for all of the outreach session, links to some of the regulatory organizations that we pulled those best practices from in order to develop the warrant article, as well as the warrant article itself, the Senate bill that's currently making its way through the mass legislator to reduce light pollution, and the American Medical Association report from 2016 about the detrimental health effects of light pollution.
So show us how to get to this.
Just back up one.
Okay. So from the town's website, if you go to the planning board page, the top left, outdoor illumination, that, if you click there, that is the subpage, and it takes you to all the information.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah. Is it also on the main page under the news? Not on the banner, but did, did you get it?
It on the... I have requested for it to be on the homepage under, here under Newsflash.
Newsflash.
Uh, so...
It will be there eventually.
Should.
Soon. We're just waiting for IT to put it in that spot.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Newsflash is listed chronologically though, so only the first three items that are posted show up. So in case someone goes in the next, you know, week or so and doesn't see it there, they'd have to click on the view all under Newsflash in order to get to the link.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. On, um, page one, part B.
Yep.
This is included application to single and two-family residential lots. Was that added recently?
Um, it was added for clarity. Town council, his opinion, you know, at the last public hearing, he did say that the entire bylaw, as it's currently written, applies to single and two-family residential lots, that it applies to the entire town. And so he had expressed that if we wanted additional clarity, that we might add that phrase.
Okay.
But it doesn't, we're not expanding the applicability. I think that that is the key thing to note here, is that the adding of that phrase doesn't expand the applicability. It's already applicable to those lots, but just to give clarity to folks who are reading it.
Thank you. And the other one under section O?
Sure.
Which is the last page. Uh, one, the last piece that was taken out, wall packs.
Yes.
Light fixtures are prohibited. Why was that stricken? Because I know, we've, we've talked about that a lot, and not...
Yeah.
In the past, we've had many discussions, at least in my tenure here, about wall packs and how specifically they are prohibited.
Yes.
Period.
Yes. So that has been moved to a separate section, just give me one second here.
Where the graphic is with the barn lights?
Yep.
Non-shielded.
So it's actually moved up further into the document, so under section E, at the end, when you were talking about the, the lighting zones, non-shielded wall packs, barn lights and floodlights not aimed downwards are prohibited in all zones.
Thank you. It's always good to stress that one.
Yeah, yeah, we wanted to make sure that that was a clause that, that maintained and that was, you know, really at the forefront. And so that's why we moved it from the back of the bylaw into the front.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the part about not aimed downward only applies to floodlights, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions, comments?
Wait, let's just be clear. Don, you're asking, non-shielded wall packs, barn lights and floodlights not aimed downward are prohibited in all zones. So non-shielded wall packs are prohibited.
Yes.
Barn lights are prohibited.
Yes.
And floodlights not aimed downward.
Right.
Are prohibited.
Right.
That's what you were asking, right?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if it could be worded or interpreted the other way, which would be, non-shielded wall packs not aimed downward, barn lights not aimed downward, and floodlights not aimed downward.
Yeah, we're hoping that the graphic underneath that statement will lend itself to clarity.
You could also move the phrase floodlights not aimed downward to the front of the sentence, and then put a comma after that.
Or you could bold them separately.
So I guess the question is, this is what will be printed in the warrant, so it would, well, no, it's not too late, it would just require, and it would be required for us to reprint this and disseminate it, if those words were to change. Our belief when we wrote this was that the, the graphic below specifically illustrates what we're trying to say, so we felt it tied.
Any ques, other questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
Make a motion, we continue the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article, update section 174-12.1, outdoor illumination, to continue to, uh, March 9, 2020 at 7:15 PM.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. So that public hearing is continued also. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, Dell EMC, Washington Street, Lot 1. This is continued from our last meeting on February 10. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself. My husband is employed by Dell.
Thank you.
Forgot to mention happily employed by Dell.
So, um, on February 3, we filed an A&R application, Form A, with the town clerk for EMC Corporation, for Washington Street, Lot 1. And the goal of that was, the goal of the A&R is to consolidate all the pieces that make up Lot 1 into Lot 1, which is comprised of, I believe, three lots, A, B and C. Old Washington Street, that was discontinued last year or the year before when the new Washington Street was accepted as the road. Then there's an old, old Washington Street up in the northwest corner of Lot 1, which attorneys opined for you that that was based on an old county layout, and that you could split it down the middle and then fix it to the right entities. And then there's a small piece in the top corner. If you can pull the plan up, that would be helpful. Then there's a small piece in the corner by Fifty Cent LLC, is that the name of it? That is also part of this. And the, um, this A&R plan also has to be endorsed in the town of Westboro as well. So at the last planning board meeting on February 10, questions arose regarding the entity, the applicant, the property owner, and it just wasn't really clear. The cover letter was a little bit confusing. So I sent a letter to Beals and Thomas, who's representing Dell EMC, on this A&R, describing the concerns that the planning board had with, you know, the owners stated on the plans, the owner on the application, you know, the certificate of authority to sign by EMC Corporation's folks. And you received that, and then we discussed it on the phone. Then you, Beals and Thomas provided us with an updated cover letter to provide a little more clarity to start, and then is attending this evening to address your questions on the entity and kind of the setup of what's proper, so we know what's going on, so.
So I have a question. This letter from Beals and Thomas is dated today, and it says, "Respectfully submits this Form A application." Is there a different, do we now have two? One dated today? No, it was the same, the same Form A application as previously submitted. So that further confuses it, because when I read this, it told me that there's another Form A that was submitted on February 24.
Yeah.
"Respectfully submits this Form A application," dated, and it's dated February 24. But go ahead, I'll let you, uh... Yeah, the intent, the intent of the letter was just to clarify the miscommunication of the previous letter. So it was an update of that previous letter. I understand the confusion now, but quite frankly, it's, again, just a clarification of, you know, Beals and Thomas is the applicant, the owner's EMC Corporation. The previous A&R submission has not changed. It's really just that I was attempting to clarify the mistake in the cover letter previously. I don't know if this goes in the file. Somebody reads it, they're going to be looking for an A&R, uh, Form A dated February 24, and the only one they're going to find is one on February 3. I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's... Can I withdraw the letter? Would that make it even easier? So you really don't need the cover letter, you just need the Form A application and the supporting documentation, correct?
This was not filed.
Right. I actually just emailed that to Karina. So where's the February, where's the cover letter from February 3, the original one?
I have it for you.
So the one on February 3 was filed with the Form A applic, it wasn't filed, it came in as a cover letter. What we filed with town clerk was the application, Form A, and the plan, and the secretary's certificate of authority to sign. So the cover letter came with the application as a cover letter, but it didn't get filed with town clerk. If I'm not mistaken, right, I just believe the Form A and the plan.
Correct.
Right? If that helps any.
So who's the owner? EMC Corporation. And in your letter dated today, it, it explains that EMC Corporation is a subsidiary of Dell Technologies Incorporated. Correct. So that, that solves, I think, or explains who we're dealing with, who the owner is, and their relationship to each other. So where's, where's the plan? On the plan, on the, um... So this matches up. It says here, prepared for EMC Corporation, and it says record owners EMC Corporation.
So the concerns that the planning board had at the last meeting was, your cover letter dated February third states, on behalf of the applicant Dell EMC, formerly EMC Corporation, Beals and Thomas respectfully submits. On the Form A application, the name of the applicant actually was Beals and Thomas.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So you tried to address that confusion in a new cover letter, which might have created a little bit more confusion. To benefit, we didn't file that letter, because it wasn't a new plan, it was kind of an explanatory letter. Second, there was, then the application indicates name of property owner as EMC Corporation. So on the actual Form A, right here, this one, this one over, this one. So on the Form A, the owner is listed as EMC Corporation, but the cover letter stated formerly EMC Corporation, which created confusion, and Dell wasn't mentioned anywhere on the plan. The third concern was also, the plan submitted, that you stamped on January twenty eighth, indicates the plans prepared for EMC Corporation, record owners EMC Corporation in the title block that you just looked at. No mention of Dell, it seems the documents don't reflect accurately the existing names, and the Form A doesn't mention Dell, therefore it's not clear who we are dealing with from the submission documents. So in your cover letter, you were trying to clarify EMC Corporation is a subsidiary of.
Is clearly the owner, yes.
Then the plans with EMC Corporation stated on them are dated December twenty first, two thousand fifteen, in the title block, but they're stamped by you January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. So you might want to explain the timeframe there in your own words, why there's such a gap in the time. The other note was that on the plan notes, there was a, a note that says, survey by Zeiss Elta, Elta Total Station, and I indicate that creates confusion, because people who aren't necessarily industry think that, who prepared the plan. You know, we know, because we're in the industry, but survey by means like, that's the company, Zeiss Elta went to do the survey.
It's, yeah, it's the brand name of the total station that we used to do the survey.
And then there was a question as to the certificate of vote dated June two thousand seventeen, which was EMC Corporation, and references the company's ultimate parent Dell Technologies. So it wasn't sure, does EMC exist, or is it Dell EMC? The cover letter, you know, so we, the planning board asked for clarification on applicant owner, property owner, and to address any discrepancies. And today is the last day for action.
We did obtain documentation from Dell Technologies. They provided a list of all their subsidiary companies on a website, which I think you have the link to. I highlighted the last page, which indicates that EMC Corporation is a subsidiary of Dell Technologies, which should solidify the secretary's certificate.
So what I would suggest, see if this sounds all right, that we vote to endorse the plan tonight, and ask you to take the February twenty fourth letter back, work with the town planner to do another letter.
Summarize.
References the February third letter, and addresses the town planner's letter. What were they, four items?
Yeah, four or five, five items.
So that this new letter dated tomorrow would clear up all of this confusion. And then it'll be in the file. This new letter will refer to the February third, and then clarify, address each of those comments, and clarify our confusion. That sound all right?
Yeah, I really think it's important, because in the three years that I've worked here, I'm realizing that you have to be really particular in how you process everything like this, because five years from now, there's, it's hard to remember, or if somebody changes, there's, what's, what happened, what goes on, and it creates like hours of research that we wouldn't have to do if the document was right there. We have to go figure it out again, and to explain to the planning board, so it's really helpful to just have closure like that, recorded in the file.
Sure.
And if, as long as there's a brief statement stating that, you know, since it's going to be a day after we approve it, that per the meeting on the twenty fourth, this.
Yeah, I was thinking we should probably refer back, so make sure there's no confusion. It's after the date, yeah.
That we jointly discussed and came to agreement on this.
So Karina, are you willing to work on this? So that the next letter we get, if you understand it, if you think it's clear, if you think it addresses the concerns, then we'll, we'd be okay.
Yeah, of course, I'll look at it to reflect your concerns, to make sure they're all addressed, I took the notes.
Thank you.
We're not done yet.
Thank you for that.
Any, any, we'll go down the line here, Mr. Mills, any questions?
No questions.
Mister Stein?
No questions.
No questions.
Mrs. Houlihan, no questions. All right, so the next step then would be the motion to endorse the A and R, and to hold it until we get the letter clarifying and sewing it all up nice and neat.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The planning board sign, endorse the plans, and then you can come pick them up tomorrow or the next day. I'll let you know soon as we have it all done.
That's great. Yeah, I'll work with you tomorrow, I'll get you the letters, we'll work on it tomorrow.
All right, sounds good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Karina?
I just wanted to point out that this evening, Jesse Stein did provide, and we did review the Mullins forms here that were filed with the town clerk for the public hearings that were missed on, by Jesse Stein on February tenth. So just to reiterate, in case people didn't hear that or see that, we had the forms signed. We received the form back from, oh no, they are, they've been, they're going to be filed with the town clerk in the morning, so that's proper procedure.
Actually, he stamped them at six fifty-five P. M.
Yes, and they're stamped, that's correct. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that you had done all that, for the record.
Thank you, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the engineering review consultant contract extension.
As you know, Fussin O'Neil is the town's engineering consultant for review. They also do review for the conservation commission. They've submitted a letter to request an extension to their contract. Their three-year contract expired in December of two thousand sixteen, and we all just got on top of that. We do have task authorizations that are kind of little subcontracts for each project that have been signed, are in the works, so we're not operating outside of this, we're under contract. I spoke with the town administrator and asked him his opinion on his experience with Fussin O'Neil over the past three years, and he said he's been very happy with their services. The board of selectmen, or the town administrator ultimately signs this contract. This information, which includes a copy of the contract extension and the updated billing rates for the next three years, was also provided to conservation, and the conservation agent indicated to me that they were also very satisfied with the reviews that Fussin O'Neil has been providing and working with us over the past three years. So in your packet are, is the letter, this revised contract, and the billing rates. I reviewed these rates, and to me, they appear in line with current billing rates, not significantly higher than the prior billing rates. They've also included a updated certificate of liability insurance. And I spoke with Dan Delaney, who's the manager in their office in Springfield, and Amy Bell, who is the, our day-to-day or weekly contact. And they were hoping to be here this evening, but one of them had vacation, and the other one was double booked for a public hearing out west. And I said that I would, you know, talk to the planning board members and give you feedback on how the other, town administrator and conservation is also pleased with their work, but to give you an opportunity to do this, if you do want them to attend, they could attend the next meeting if you had any, you know, burning questions or concerns that they could address with you directly. But I can say that from my perspective, they've been very good to work with. Once in a while, we have small things that we get back in line on, for example, the landscaping, make sure that they focus on that, and when we do that, everything gets focused on, for the most part. They address our concerns. Their estimates have been pretty much on target with getting pretty close to whatever they estimate is what they've worked, and sometimes underneath those estimates, they've come below those estimates. So they're not just billing right to what they can, they're showing their actual hours that they spend on the projects. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you, thanks for all that work, Karina. You, having come from the consulting world, are probably best qualified of all of us to, you know, get a feel for the, you know, the accuracy and the fairness of the, of the prices. For the most part, we're concerned about fair prices, even though the, the planning board doesn't pay these unless we hire Fussin O'Neil for our own project or projects. For the most part, the cons-, the proponents that come in with plans and different projects, they're, those are peer-reviewed by Fussin O'Neil and paid through the town, paid by the proponents. Open up to the board, any questions, Mr. Mills?
Karina, and this might be just education for myself. For the, the insurance liability coverage, is that, is this in case they, say, miscalculate something and, you know, they approve a project and it doesn't go right, and then we have to, and they admit, oh yeah, we made a mistake, and then we have to fix it? They go back to this to correct it, is that how it would be corrected?
Yeah, there's actually two documents here, one is where you have your commercial general liability, automobile liability, umbrella, workers comp, and auto, which are, say they're on site doing inspection, and they get hurt.
Oh, I'm saying if they.
Then, there's a second page, and this one too, not to cut you off, sorry, but here is your professional liability, type of insu-, professional liability, five million dollar limit amount. See at the very bottom, type of insurance, professional liability. That is when you have errors and omissions in, say you designed something, and there's a mistake in the design, or something is missing, or something happens based on that, that's their liability, and that's the limits that I, when I was doing engineering, it was three million was a common amount, now they're, do five million, some of the larger firms.
So, I have no complaints over the work Fussin O'Neil's done in the past, and what I expect they'll do in the future.
Does that answer your insurance question, though?
But this is going to go into what I'm about to say is. You know, I think we have some projects that have come before us in the past, and might come before us in the future, that are going to far exceed that five million dollars if they were to get approved, and if some, something drastic were to go wrong. So I don't know how we can protect the town, you know, if something like that were to happen in those extreme condition, outlier conditions or projects that come before us that, you know, I don't, that we could make sure that it could be corrected if it would exceed five million dollars. So maybe just ask them, is there a way that we could get a, you know, on extremely large projects, an additional rider to cover? I don't know, even know how we'd come up with the dollar amount, but I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. Because I'd hate for us to have a massive project go through and something major go wrong with it, and we could only fix a quarter of it or a tenth of it.
Okay, I'll ask them, yeah, I know that in.
How that, how that could be done, I'm not asking to change it, but just for.
If there's a possibility to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you can buy any level of insurance. I know that, you know, like state agencies, like the MWRA, we used to bid on those jobs, they always had higher limits of liability requirements from the consultants they worked on, because there were a lot of like dam reconstruction projects, and when dams fail, like they did in Taunton ten, fifteen years ago, that made the big push for dam inspections, that, you know, they really honed in on that. So some state agencies require more, towns from my experience were usually in the two to five million dollar range, depending on the type of work that's being done, but I will definitely ask them.
Thank you.
So if the town, I mean, the vast majority of the work that we have Fussin O'Neil do is to review the design work of other engineers, other engineering firms. So. If the town has a, like a twenty million dollar project, like a public safety building, the town hires a consultant to design it, if they hired Fussin O'Neil to design it, then maybe for that specific project, the, the town might feel that a higher number would be, would be better. But it seems to me that. But it seems to me that a pro, a proponent comes in for a twenty million dollar office complex, three stories, and the, I mean, we don't even, we don't even check out, we don't, we don't have Fussin O'Neil perform a structural analysis. We don't have them go in and look at the size of the beams and columns to make sure that they're properly sized and connected. So the designer, the original designer is responsible for that. So if the building collapses or portions of the building collapse, I mean, even if, if the, if the beam was the wrong size and it caused that, we, Fussin O'Neil isn't, we're not asking them to, to get into that, that level of design review.
But if the stormwater were, say, to erode the corner of the building and make it uninhabitable, and say Fussin O'Neil was part of that.
Right, they'd be reviewing the storm, stormwater counts, yeah.
Or if it was a massive subdivision that caused tremendous water to neighboring neighbors or other buildings that were being built, that could be-
But to the chairman's point, wouldn't the proponents, contractors, liability exposure be in question at that point and not so much the town's consultant?
I think they all are. What happens, my experience, if there's a lawsuit, all the companies involved get pulled in and have to defend themselves from their position because they're gonna, the, the insurance usually goes after everyone.
So, and again, I'm, I'm only saying, I wouldn't look to have that, you know, number be ballooned up for the entirety. It would only be on certain very large projects that would come through that would say, okay, you know, this, this one, you know, we, your five million dollar coverage wouldn't be sufficient if this went south and bump it up on that one.
Is this something maybe I should ask town council about?
Yeah, you can ask them.
To see if-
But you see, I, I just wanna make sure that we're covered.
Yeah, I agree. I, I personally, insurance is very important. You never wanna be underinsured, so.
But mind us all that this is, this is our consultant's insurance binder for that entity. It's not the town's insurance errors and omissions or liability coverage. So we're not really reviewing the town's insurance needs right now.
I'm not, yeah, no, I agree with that, but we're looking at their contract. And if we were, if something were to happen, I mean, we're limited at five million dollars.
They would be.
Yeah.
If, I've been, above and beyond that, they would be responsible for whatever damages were above and beyond that five million.
Okay.
If somebody sued them.
Well, we're still gonna have the town planner go over this with Fussin O'Neil, but this discussion, I think, will help her in that discussion. And then if it goes to the town administrator or even town council for further review, at least you'll have the benefit of these, these words that we're saying in our concerns. Any more on that? Mrs. Hulahan?
I'm not specific to Mr. Mills' comment, but just a general question, so I guess twofold. So I don't think it's such a bad idea to understand the policy for RFPs and really understand, you know, what, what other agencies are out there that we, that may be available to us. One specific item that just arose tonight, without a resident who is here, who also sits on the planning board, making comment to a specific item on a landscape. We, as planning board, would have relied on that report from Fussin O'Neil, but it might, it may have excluded a large piece of, of the obligations of the contractor. So my worry is that they probably, their job is to actually make sure that we are prepared for our job, unless I'm, I'm incorrect. So if I'm reliant on Fussin O'Neil to be thorough, I think they failed this evening. It to be confirmed, but I would be a little bit hesitant to pursue a new contract without very much vetting what the responsibilities and scale and scope of the contracts and how we engage them, and as long as we're very clear on what the expectations are. So that's one point. And then the other point is, is it such a bad idea to understand and entertain capabilities from, from other organizations versus just rely on that the rates are good rates? 'Cause we want quality, not just cheap rates.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree, but I also wanna just say that everybody makes mistakes here and there. The mistakes aren't as frequent that I see coming through here. You know, I don't always catch everything myself, but as a team, we have more coverage that way. The benefit of Fussin O'Neil is that they have experience in the town. They know the town. They know the developers. They know the personalities and et cetera. So they do, that's a benefit to have that. There's no guarantee that a new consultant won't make similar mistakes in a different area, say drainage. So Fussin O'Neil is very strong in their stormwater management reviews, which is important to conservation and us. And not to say landscaping isn't important. It's not as life-threatening potential as, you know, a bridge or a dam or maybe stormwater, but I can just speak to that. We've tried often in, in, as a consultant, that I was, to vet everything as much as you can and review and review, and sometimes some things get missed. And it's just not always perfect.
I would add to that. I, I personally, as a planning board member, have never relied solely on the consultant, this one single consultant, to make a, a voting decision. It's, we also rely on the butters and other boards and commissions and committees in town for their input. So I, I, I agree the quality and thoroughness is extremely important, but I think we also have to have realistic expectations of, of what a consultant can do for us.
Maybe we just need to, with what Ms. Hulahan was saying, you know, pull it out that we're expecting the landscape plan to be verified, make it more clear and as an expectation.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and it would help to address-
Because I think that's fallen short, we've struggled-
Couple times.
As the planning board in general over the years with responsibilities, roles and responsibility on landscaping and open space. So, and that would probably be the other one, the bullet point, is make certify that the open space was documented or whatever. The bounds were in properly. I know this last one, it had that, but just put it on a nice bow.
With specific attention to landscaping and open space.
Yes.
So when they go out for an inspection, are they making sure that the, the project matches what's on the plans and that the conditions are met, or what?
Yeah, they do that. They, they review the decisions and the conditions. They talk to me about specifics. For example, if a tree is required to be planted somewhere else, they correspond with me and say, was this condition met? Was this condition met? Was the sidewalk, for example, Stonebrook had in-kind sidewalk, and they made a payment in lieu of that to the DPW, which the DPW accepted, and it met that condition. So yeah, there's-
So then, wouldn't, wouldn't they look at the landscaping if that's on the plan?
They would, they would, they would. I can't say why they missed that row of Arbevites. I can't specifically say. I just know that in the beginning, when the bond was first done landscaping, they, they overkilled the landscaping. And then the developer's attorney and developer said, you can't include that. That's not part of the decision. And it was agreed that that wasn't. So they had to tone back what they included for landscaping. That's not to say that the Arbevites on the plan there should not have been included. I'm just saying that it did come up, so.
So that, so that's what I can see. I don't know if the rest of the landscape plan has been. So just, I know they've met, they've missed things in the past, and just understanding what's, for me, I think, what's expected of them. And what they're, what they do on inspections would be helpful.
Yeah, and I know that as civil engineers, for the most part, you know, they're looking at roadway alignment, you know, other curbs and the gutters and the catch basins all in the right places, the drainage properly installed, right depths, is the backfill proper? You know, where the pavement thickness is sufficient so that the roadway, if it does get accepted, lasts long enough? Is the tension basin built properly so that it can attenuate the water? Those types of features. Things like traffic, a little bit more intangible. Landscaping's not intangible, but it's kind of a softer item in that industry, you know, so.
Yeah, that's why I think if we just stated, because even when I read their, you know, scope of services, I mean, it's very engineer-oriented. So I could see how that would, if we made it specific.
If we emphasized a bullet item.
On open space and-
Yeah.
Landscaping plan would help reinforce it.
I seem to recall several years ago that a representative, was it Dan Delaney, that came before this board the last time this issue came up of the contract?
What?
She said he couldn't be here today.
I did talk to him.
So he was aware that this was an agenda item, just couldn't come?
He was, he was, I let him know last Wednesday. I said, you know, a meeting's gonna be coming up, and they had vacation conflict, and he had double hearing tonight. And I said, I will bring it up to the planning board since it's on the agenda, but if they have questions, we'll continue it to the March ninth where he could attend.
Yeah, I think that that's warranted.
You can think back, just not that long ago, we had the plans for the public safety building. And just by random, we, on the, we have a town planner, myself, and at the time, planning board member Phil Jenks, all three civil engineers, professional engineer licensed. And the, between, just the three of us analyzing the design work that was submitted, we found multiple omissions, conflicting information. So, and I can tell you, I, I think this is, that Fussin O'Neil is either the third or fourth town consulting engineer that we've had since I've been on the board. And it was a huge difference when we, when we picked up Fussin O'Neil. There were, I'm not sure if it was the previous one or the one before that. I mean, it was just long periods of time. You'd submit something to them, and at times there were, there was inconsistent timing for getting reports back. Sometimes it was in pieces. It was just a complete, much, Fussin O'Neil's work is, I believe, much noticeably better than our previous consultants. I think that we've been, the degree of review is far more complex now than, than it was, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. And, you know, Fussin O'Neil is, is fully capable of, and of the most complex of, of reviews. And I think my memory is that their response time has been consistently excellent. Sometimes it takes a little longer than others, but it's never really been a problem. Especially when we see how long the proponents' engineers take to correct things or add things. And so I, I just remember when, that transition between the last consultant and this, and Fussin O'Neil, it was noticeably better in, across the board. And, and it's been consistent for years. How long have we had them?
Long as I've been on the board.
At least six years, because I know when I first started, they had just gone through an extension for three years, and then the, these past three years.
So we'll see if Dan can, Dan or someone can, from Fussin O'Neil can come to our next meeting? Is that the, what the board wants?
I told them that was going to happen.
Okay.
So he's, he knows already.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, the planners' report.
Chairman, two-minute recess? Motion for a two-minute recess?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion here in and all in favor, we'll see you in two minutes.
After two minutes, planning board is back in session. Karina? Planners' report.
First thing, at the end of the meeting, we have to sign the A and
Um, first thing, um, at the end of the meeting, we have to sign the A and R plans, and then I also have, um, Ken's Foods 325 Turnpike. They, um, between the last meeting and this meeting, they submitted the final plans for endorsement from their modification, um, that happened several months ago, so we finally got those. So I'm hoping you can stick around to sign those, if not, maybe come in individually. All right. Quickly here. On April 7th, the Board of Selectmen, um, and Sharpsy and Planning Board are scheduled for a joint meeting to hear a presentation on House Bill 3507 on housing choice initiatives. Um, I just want to make sure I heard back from Dawn and Mimi that they can attend.
What time is that at?
That's, um, 6:30 PM on Monday, April 7th.
That's a Tuesday.
Is it a Tuesday? I'm sorry, Tuesday. Oops. Is that a Tuesday?
Uh, yeah, I indicated I, I felt that I, I could go, but I would certainly defer, um, to Mr., um, Stein on that one, since you've been-
Well, it's a joint meeting-
Right.
-with, with Planning and Sharpsy, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's so that, um, the Planning Board can, um, maybe have a consensus whether they support or do not support or have concerns with that House Bill, so that, um, Planning Board can maybe have a letter back to Sharpsy what their opinion is of that House Bill.
And yes, I will be attending.
Excellent.
So I just need to hear from Andy and Marnie if they're available.
Seven, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other benefit is that that same meeting, um, Sharpsy Chair Dorian Jazinski is trying to have, um, um, a presentation for, what was the other presentation, Sarah? There were two parts to this. There was the, um, House Bill Housing Initiative where the MMA staff was going to come and present.
Yep.
And there's another component. There was another piece, I'll think of it before the end.
The, the crux of it is the, um, super majority. That's the whole thing.
Yes, that part, but the housing production plan is going to be presented briefly-
At the same meeting.
That's right, Jesse. That's right, the, the key topic to that is the majority vote for the House Bill 3507, but the other initiative that evening is since the Planning Board's going to be there, and they have to sign off on the housing production plan, as well as the Board of Selectmen for the DHCD, um, they were going to combo it so that we could have just-
I have to compliment, uh, Dorian Jazinski is doing a fantastic job as Chair of Sharpsy. Has really rejuvenated that committee, and with Sarah's great work as well. Thank you.
All right, excellent. So, any questions on that part? Okay. Um, Advisory is having a meeting on March 10th, 7:00 PM, that's a Tuesday. Uh, we have a Planning Board meeting on the 9th, and they asked for, uh, someone to attend, um, and they thought maybe Andy could speak to the bylaws because, um, you're going to be there for CPC anyway. So, if they had any questions on the lighting bylaw or the site plan.
I'll, I'll be taking the lighting bylaw. Are you coming to that too, or is it just me? Me- Yeah, I think Sarah and I will be there for the lighting bylaw.
I, I had planned on going for site plan.
Okay. Um, so do I need to post an agenda if you're all three there? Okay, so Sarah will have to post an agenda for that, March 10, 20, and Andy, okay, perfect. Um, I prepared a draft, uh, proclamation for the Board of Selectmen for Tree City USA for this year, hoping that they can proclaim April 24th, 2020, which is a Friday, which is Arbor Day, for Southborough to have Arbor Day as well, and, um, maybe we can pull together that, the tree that got planted at Trotter gets measured for the 300-year anniversary, kind of a small, uh, what do they call that when you put it in a tube?
Time capsule.
A time capsule, sorry. Um, maybe they could do a time capsule, they guess the height, put it in, so that we have already one event for the 300-year anniversary, so maybe we can pull that together. And, um, if there's anybody you could recommend to plant a tree, I'm going to still ask Fay School if they're interested in replacing a tree out front, um, but if you have any other suggestions. We did get a $30 donation for tree, um, planting that went into the general fund, in a special account just for, uh, to go to tree planting, um, but maybe we can come up with a tree to be planted somewhere.
I think they want some trees on Deerfoot Road, right?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not being funny, though, I mean, it'd be a good place to start.
Yeah.
Actually, uh, we attended a meeting at the Art Center last week, myself, Mrs. Lutrell, and the Town Planner, and, um, on my way, uh, leaving there, I noticed that there was many opportunities for, um, locations to pu- put a tree near the Art Center-
At the Art Center.
On Highland Street. No wires, no water lines.
On a somewhat related topic, did we ever hear back from the Board of Selectmen on the request to discuss the policy for cutting down trees?
Yes, I bel- we didn't hear back specifically, but I, and Sam, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it came up at a meet, like, was a agenda item to talk about the process.
Chairman Shay says working on it.
Yeah.
I don't know where he stands on it.
Sorry.
Our Chairman Brian Shay said at one meeting that he is working on it, and that's all I know, it's been a couple of meetings since he said that, so I'm presuming he's still working on it, uh, I'll inquire. Thanks.
He's working on a policy?
He's working on clarification between, uh, there are two state laws that seem to be at least overlapping, if not in conflict on that, so, um, my understanding, he's working on a statement that clarifies how that needs to be handled, but I'm not, I can't speak for him, but that's my understanding of what he's thinking about.
We, we did receive an opinion from Town Council, was that shared with the-
Uh, right, I think there are a couple of opinions from Town Council out there now, not sure, but one Town Council opinion was a little dated, and I thought he was going to ask for another one, I'm not sure.
There is an updated one.
Okay.
A very recent one.
Like, in the last week?
No.
In the last two months.
Yeah, last couple of months or something.
Around the time of Deerfoot Road issues that were-
Yeah.
Going back, I think he's got all of that.
Okay.
But it still didn't seem totally clear when we talked about it at one point, so Mr. Shay is working on clarifying that, that's all I know. Thanks.
Okay, um, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, um, indicated they're having the 50th Anniversary Celebration of Earth Day, um, she says at the library Saturday, April 25th, in the afternoon, exact time to be determined. Um, would like the Planning Board to participate with a display, maybe Tree City Initiative. I have the signs we had when the bylaw was on the town warrant for Tree City and the tree bylaw, and it's kind of a generic sign that says, "Make Southborough Tree City USA." We could probably put those out there, um, um, so if anybody has any other ideas or wants to attend Earth Day to promote Tree City, um, let me know. Um, we will certainly be having info on the dark skies there as well for the lighting information, so... I just, I know that she corrected me on the date here, so I don't want to say the wrong date, but, um... Sarah, do you know when she said the Earth Day is? We'll, we'll find, I'll, we'll send an email to you and tell you when the Earth Day is. Um, because Arbor Day, okay, enough on that. Um, that's the Advisory. Board of Selectmen, um, Mass DOT, um, I mentioned this a couple meetings ago, uh, about the bridge replacements, um, that they're going to start working on. Well, My Southborough had an article yesterday morning or this morning, um, with some information about that project, um, so if you check that out, you can see it on, um, mysouthborough.com, uh, where Mass DOT, um, put out an announcement talking about the projects, so that you can get it firsthand from there, instead of me telling you the wrong things. Uh, three Southborough bridges and another one in Westborough are proposed for replacement next year. And I think I mentioned where they were last time. All right, so if you have any questions, we can-
Could I comment on that?
Sure.
Um, I actually attended the Mass DOT briefing today in Westboro on that project, and they're going to send me a PowerPoint presentation on it, which I'll be happy to send to people, but they're doing the, uh, the rapid replacement deal that they did on 93 North when one of those bridges collapsed, like, eight years ago or something like that. So essentially, they will do, uh, a bridge replacement, um, o- over a weekend, 55 hours between like 6:00 PM Friday to 5:00 AM Monday. They use precast sections, and they will close, um, roads in town, Corderville, um, Parkerville, and, um-
Woodland?
Woodland Road, uh, over those weekends, and they'll do, um, each way, the eastbound lane one weekend and the westbound lane another weekend kind of thing. But it's new technology, it's worked in a lot of places, they're very optimistic that it'll work here, minimum disruption, and, um, interesting engineering process to do that, but they claim to have all the things worked out and so forth, and they're asking for, for feedback from the towns. There's a meeting, I guess it's Wednesday evening, they're going to talk about it subor, so if there are issues that Planning Board is concerned about, uh, DPW has been involved, um, they ask, are there things that are going on in town during the summer of 2021, which is what is going to happen, that they need to understand to plan around, so if there's some big town event or something, they'll, they're, they're, they can do flexible scheduling for that, but, uh, interesting. Uh, the question I ask is, is, uh, I, our friend, Mr. Carl Guyer, has raised this question previously, is can we get a better-looking bridge? And, and in fact, uh, they have done this on, on, uh, 128, they've put up at least one bridge, it's not a bad-looking bridge, it has rails and, and, um, streetlights and so forth on top of it, it looks nice, and they seemed a little surprised when I raised that question today, but, uh, the guy said he would check with his boss, which I think means probably not, but, but we'll see. He offered, he offered, maybe, maybe the town can, uh, choose the color for the painting of the undercarriage of the bridge, but anyway, uh, big project, interesting, and, uh, you know, I would encourage people to keep an eye on that, and if there are concerns or issues, there will be different times to provide that input, but, uh, it's, it's going to create some, uh, inconvenience, at least on, uh, six weekends in the summer of 2021. Thanks.
Thanks, Sam. All right, and lastly, let me just make sure we didn't miss anything over here. And that's what I have for the planners' report. Meeting minutes? Yes, they're just not in your packet. But remember at the beginning of the meeting, I asked, "Does anybody need them printed?" But you weren't here yet, sorry. You can, you, would you like a set?
Make a motion to reapprove the minutes from, uh, February 10th, 2020, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five to zero. Our next meeting is March 9th. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? We're adjourned.